Okay, I'll call to order the ninth of October 2008 Santa Barbara Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Rodriguez, will you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Jostis?
Absent.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Vice Chair Larson?
Here.
And Chair Myers?
Here. Mr. Cotto, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or an addition of ex-agenda items?
There are not.
How about announcements and appeals? And when we do announcements and appeals, I think we'll go over this, the upcoming planning commission agenda items.
Great. One announcement that I have, and I guess I will have to give an apology at the same time. Eight hundred Santa Barbara Street, the appeal was at, I was at council, not yesterday, but last week. And I guess we and they were expecting planning commissioners to attend. I think it was going to be either John Jostis or Charmaine Jacobs, I can't remember. But I don't, you know, I'm sort of new at this, I wasn't sure exactly how the coordination happened, so I don't, I don't know if you were, you knew that you were supposed to go, or that if you, or if you were expecting a...
No, I think it was our fault.
Or something, but I, you know, if I see something like that, I'll try to, I'll try to do my best to give a reminder.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyway, sorry about that. And then let's go over the planning commission agenda. Last week's meeting was canceled. Yesterday, you know that you had your joint meeting with the city council. Next week, we'll have a substantial conformance at the lunch item, as a lunch item for the Rogers tract. The 124 Los Aguais project is being continued. We're looking into an environmental review issue. Then we have 600 to 800 North Milpus, this is a general plan amendment from resident, changing the land use designation from residential to commercial. And we have 15 South Hope, which is a mixed-use project where the old consumer's furniture is on South Hope. And then that evening, there's a joint meeting of the planning commission and the Transportation and Circulation Committee to talk about the introduction of the Los Vasitas Mission Circulation Options Report, which is a report that Cottage Hospital is required to pay for, but not actually pay for the implementation of it, but to pay for the study to see what the different circulation options could be to, well, you'll hear all about that next week. And then the Public Works Streets Capital Improvement Budget. And that is, that actually is a special meeting of the TCC, it's not their regularly scheduled meeting. November 6th, we have a biannual report of Kai Esperanza, the homeless shelter. And then we'll have a negative declaration environmental hearing on 210 and 216 Megs and 290 Lighthouse Road. November 13th is Plan Santa Barbara right now, it's the continuation of the, of the last, I think it was the twenty, the special meeting on the 29th of September.
I won't be here for that meeting. Something that was planned some time ago.
Okay, I will write that down and make sure it gets stuck on the agenda. And there is probably room for one more item, but we don't have anything scheduled yet. November 20th, we have a negative declaration hearing for 101 East Victoria and a negative declaration hearing for 1900 Las Fuen, which is the Ellen Canto Hotel. Nothing on the 4th scheduled yet on December 11th, 3885 and 3887 State Street, which is, now it's called the Enclave, formerly known as the Burkas Lofts, which is right next door to the Galleria, between the Galleria and Grace Lutheran Church.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just before we move off the agenda, I will be abstaining from the November 20th item on 101 East Victoria.
And Mr. Chair, I have a question, maybe the attorney can, can answer. Do I need to step down for the joint meeting with the TCC because Cottage paid for that report?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Larson, I know you've asked this question in the past, I haven't been able to...
Oh, okay. You don't know either yet.
I will look into that tomorrow for you and have an answer for you, so you don't have to, so you can plan appropriately for next week's meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you. The reason for abstaining from 101 East Victoria, as in the past, my, the lawyer, the lawyer representing the applicant in that project is a member of the same law firm as my husband.
Okay, and is December 18th the last meeting of the year?
It is.
So we will, we'll look forward to having our, our staff party that evening of that, of that day.
Yes.
Yes, I'll be working on that.
Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask Mr. Vincent if he could check for me also on the October 16th evening meeting, since I am doing work with Greta Valley Cottage Hospital. It's not connected with this, but I just want to be sure.
Okay, is there anything on the show agenda that doesn't look like there's anything that we need to go over?
No, I don't, I don't think on that, but we're, if you want to talk about upcoming appeals and other items at city councils, this is on page four.
Okay.
October 7th, that was yesterday, we were, this shows the adoption of the inclusionary housing ordinance, that was not adopted, that was continued one week for some minor, it was continued one week for some, I believe some minor language changes to the ordinance. October 21st, the Finance Committee is discussing the next steps for the Upper State Street Study. And November 18, November 11th or 18th, I showed, I'm showing this as the Plan Santa Barbara interim ordinance, but at yesterday's joint meeting, the council and the planning commission decided that there would be no interim ordinance, and they'll concentrate on the charter amendment instead. And so either November 11th or the 18th, it'll be at council to provide direction for staff on that item. And I showed the PC reps to be Bruce Bartlet and Charmaine Jacobs. November 18th will be the introduction of the specific plan for 535 East Montecito with the adoption on the 25th. There will be an appeal to council of the Ellen Canto, 1900 Las Fuen, this is the so-called central plant.
Mm-hmm.
And then December 11th, special meeting regarding Plan Santa Barbara, that'll be, that's a special meeting on a Thursday at 9:30 in the morning here in council chambers. On December 16th, there'll be a regular meeting, at the council's regular meeting, they will be having more discussion of Plan Santa Barbara at 6:00 PM. And on December 23rd, 101 East Victoria appealed to council from, from the planning commission decision. Okay, that's all I have.
Who's appealing that?
I.
I thought the neighbors were on board with that.
I don't know.
Mr. Chair? Yes. It is one of the, a person who lives nearby, maybe works nearby, I can't remember. It's, I don't believe it is the condo association anymore, there's another interested party who has some relationship to the immediate area, though. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cotto. At this point, I'll open up public comment for anybody that wishes to speak to anything that is not on our agenda. If there is anyone wishing to speak, please step forward. I don't see anyone, so I'll close the public comment hearing for that and bring it to our only item today. It's item number three, it's a concept review. It's the application of Lisa Plowman, agent for Southern California Nevada Conference, United Church of Christ at 230 Lighthouse Road. And Ms. Allison Debusk is our staff, staff planner.
Thank you, Chair Myers and planning commissioners. As you said, this project is a concept review of the tenement subdivision for probably working with that 230 Lighthouse Road. The subject parcel is almost 1.7 acres in size and is located at the end of Lighthouse Road, immediately north of Washington Avenue. The subject parcel is zoned briefly, one family residence, and has a general plan provision and regulation of residential five units. In January of 2007, the commission reviewed a conceptual...
Thank you. Reviewed a conceptual proposal to construct 22 units on the site. The planning commission recommended that the applicant design a project that fit within the site's single-family zoning, but did encourage the provision of affordable housing units on-site if possible. The current proposal is intended to respond to the planning commission's comments on that prior proposal. The current project involves the demolition of all existing site improvements and subdivision of the site into 10 lots, with three of those lots being designated for affordable housing. Vehicular access would be provided via driveways along the northern and southern property lines, and construction of the individual homes is not proposed as part of the project. The proposed lot sizes would range from approximately 8,500 to 10,600 net square feet for the market lots, and 2,760 to 3,520 net square feet for the affordable lots. This exhibit is the site plan, and as you can see, it's laid out with private driveways running along the northern and southern property lines, and that would provide all vehicular access to the lots. There is a common walkway that would run down the middle of the site. And also proposed for the market lots is an uncovered guest parking space in addition to the two-car garage that would be required for each individual residence. The approvals required for the project are a tentative subdivision map, lot area modifications for the three affordable lots, interior setback modifications for the affordable lots, parking modifications for the affordable lots, open yard area modifications for the affordable lots, street frontage modifications for eight of the lots, public street frontage waivers, and a coastal development permit. The applicant has also submitted an alternative proposal, and this was submitted to staff prior to the current proposal. This alternative provided seven single-family lots, very similar to the current proposal, but rather than the three affordable single-family lots, it included a four-unit condominium on this parcel one. And this is an enlarged version of that four-unit condominium portion. The alternative would require a rezone and general plan, local coastal plan amendment for the condominium portion of the development, because condominiums are not allowed in a single-family zone. And for this reason, staff did not support the proposal and suggested that the applicant find an alternative that worked within the single-family zoning. However, staff and the applicant would appreciate feedback from the commission on the, on this proposal versus the three-lot, single-family subdivision proposal. And this is an example of the front elevation of that condominium building. The key question that staff and the applicant would like the planning commission to consider is whether the proposed pattern of development is appropriate for the site and the neighborhood. And if so, then we can get into the details of all the modifications and other discretionary actions that they're requesting. If not, then we'd like to discuss what a more appropriate route may be. The proposed subdivision design requires a public street waiver because the lots are served by a private driveway rather than a public street. And associated with that, the lots would have their frontage on a private driveway rather than a public street, which necessitates lot frontage modifications. The more traditional suburban style of development would probably have a public street that ran down the middle of this lot and provided access to all the lots. And there's an example of that just up the street. So that would be the altern, or an alternative layout for the project. So one of the things that staff would appreciate feedback from the commission on is whether the findings to support the public street waiver could be made, and also the associated lot frontage modification findings. The applicant will go into more detail as to why they're proposing the private driveways rather than the public street. For the affordable lots, there are several modifications that are required. As I mentioned, it requires a lot area modification to allow three over-density lots. It also requires interior setback modifications to reduce the required setbacks to zero feet. Parking modification to reduce the required parking to one covered space rather than two spaces. And an open yard area modification to reduce the size and dimensions of the required open yard areas to 15 feet by 15 feet rather than 1,250 square feet with minimum 20-foot dimensions. I did also want to just briefly touch on the proposed updates to the inclusionary housing ordinance. As was mentioned, this is scheduled for adoption at the city council next Tuesday. And as currently drafted, it would require that single-family subdivisions of less than 10 units would either need to construct one dwelling unit that would be offered as owner-occupied middle or upper-middle income, or to pay an in-lu fee of $17,700 per unit. Many of staff's concerns about this proposal relate back to the logistics of actually implementing it. For example, the logistics of providing affordable land rather than actually constructing the affordable units, the logistics of ensuring that the parking demand does not exceed the supply. Also, the private areas with this site layout would be limited and would require fencing, and we just want to be sure that that's taken into consideration, you know, what the final outcome of this subdivision would really look like. And here's an, again, an aerial shot of the neighborhood. That concludes staff's report, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff at this time? I have a question for your last slide, will you, can you put it, the logistics of providing affordable land rather than constructing the affordable units, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. The applicant is proposing that Habitat for Humanity be the entity that regulates this portion of the property. And staff could see how that could work with Habitat for Humanity, because that's what they do, they build housing units. If it were any other entity, though, we, we're not sure how having this land that's affordable would really work. You know, how would someone then afford to build the house? You know, how do you deal with all those secondary issues?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Jacobs.
And at present, has Habitat for Humanity submitted any materials?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Jacobs, the applicant has submitted a letter from Habitat for Humanity, and perhaps they can get into more detail on that if anything has, anything more recent has been discussed with them. At this point, they're not a co-applicant on the project, and the letter indicates that they're interested in it, but they're not a, a co-applicant at this time.
Mr. Chair, if I can elaborate on this point as well. The, the city's inclusionary housing ordinance has, has anticipated having ground subdivisions where buildings are not associated with the subdivision, and incorporating the inclusionary housing ordinance's conditions in this, into the approval of the subdivision. If this project were to move forward in a, in a fashion similar to what is proposed today and met with approval by, by the planning commission, the affordable lots would have covenants that would be required as a condition of approval. The subdivider would covenant to maintain those lots and not sell them for more than an affordable rate. And that covenant would move through to whoever the, the ultimate producer of the houses would be, whether that's Habitat for Humanity or some other low, or nonprofit, or even profit provider of homes, if they could, there would basically be a price restriction on the ultimate price the housing units could be sold for. That would be the mechanism for keeping the affordability. So while Habitat has expressed interest, it's not dependent upon their participation or any particular entity's participation. Those lots would be covenanted that the ultimate housing units that are on them would be sold at affordable rates. Okay, thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two questions, one, just to follow up on this. Could lots be built on either council or, or staff? Could any lots be built on while the affordable lots remain vacant? Or would the affordable ones have to be built on at the same time?
Commissioner Myers and Commissioner White, what would, the applicant would be required to submit an inclusionary housing plan as part of their project, and that's where those types of details would be worked out. Typically, we do require that the affordable units be sold prior to occupancy of the market-rate units. So that is the typical path, although there are times when exceptions have been granted. So that, those are the details that we would be looking at in their inclusionary housing plan.
Maybe you could speak to that when we get there. Secondly, what is the, what is the parcel minimum size in this zone district?
The minimum parcel size is 7,500 square feet, although it does also need to...
Net or gross?
That is net.
Net. So then, okay, what we're looking at here then is all of the parcels are, would be getting a modification on, I'm looking at 61, 41, right? And so forth and so on? Is that right? Okay, and Ms. Plowman will address that issue as well. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Myers. This is a kind of a new concept, putting lots into the affordable housing mix instead of the condominium, for example. So I just want to learn a bit about it as, as we go along. Would the commission be able to require that the applicant build those units as part of the map subdivision, such that they would be built and then offered for sale prior to the lots?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Jacobs, that is certainly something that could be a required condition of approval. It's something that we have considered. I think the way that the inclusionary housing ordinance is written, it anticipates that with a dry lot subdivision such as this, the in-lu fee would be paid. So the applicant is proposing this under all, under our alternative compliance section. So it really is up to staff, the planning commission, and the applicant to work out all those details and how it would be implemented.
Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have staff perhaps elaborate on how granny units would play into the yet-to-be-adopted, updated inclusionary housing ordinance. From what I understand, if granny units are rented, then they have to be at affordable rent levels and controlled, just like, you know, other controlled housing. So how does that play into the inclusionary housing ordinance, and is that an option that we can consider?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Bartlet, you are correct that granny units do need to be, under our current ordinance, rented either to an immediate family member or at an affordable rate. At this time, I, I don't know how they would play into our inclusionary housing ordinance. I don't know that it would be considered unless it was part of that alternative means of compliance, and perhaps we could find that it was a, an adequate substitution for meeting the inclusionary ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Is that something that would be addressed in the next week before it's adopted, or not really?
Mr. Chair, I can respond to that. Mr. Vincent? The inclusionary housing ordinance applies to single-family homes and condominium units. They, in other words, units of real property that can be transferred separate and apart from other units of real property. A secondary dwelling unit, a granny unit, is not a, it exists as part of the same piece of property, of real property, as the main dwelling unit. So the inclusionary housing ordinance would not apply to the secondary, the addition of a secondary dwelling unit on any particular lot. As far as these condos are concerned, and most condos are concerned, they wouldn't provide sufficient land area to qualify for a secondary dwelling unit on the same lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll hear the applicant's presentation. Ms. Plowman?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We're having some technical challenges here. It looks like it's going to do it. My name's Lisa Plowman with Piker Group Architects. I'm the planning manager for our firm, and I'm representing the United Church of Christ. Gary Roberts back here is the, our applicant, and he's here and able to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you, Allison, for a thorough presentation, and I'm going to walk you through our version of that. I'll try not to linger too long on issues that she's already covered. Just a little bit of background, we were here, or I'm sorry, on the church, the United Church of Christ owned the, has owned the property for 40 years, and there was a congregation that was operational there for most of that time. They closed the church down in an effort to consolidate some of their facilities and moved that congregation to the first congregational church, and they're interested in selling this property as a way to fund other activities that they've going, got going on in the community and the rest of the state. But the church is also very civically-minded, and they want to make sure that any future development of this property has some social benefit to the community. And so when they came forward previously, they had sought to, this is actually the project site, they had sought to come up with a project that they thought would actually contribute something to the community with respect to affordable housing. This gives you an idea, you've already seen the site. Allison's gone over the site statistics. The current church on the site is about 5,500 square feet, and that would be demolished. These are the site photos from Lighthouse and down the driveway. This just gives you an idea of some of the surrounding development. There's this cul-de-sac neighborhood, and then Lighthouse Court, which is a mixed-use project up at the corner. Shows Lazy Acres, and then Shoreline Villas, which is directly across the street on Lighthouse. And then that just gives you an idea of the surrounding land uses with Washington School to the south, single-family neighborhood which is accessed off Salida del Sol here, commercial offices and shopping center over here, single-family here, and two-family residential development here. So with that in mind, the, the church's idea that they want to have a project that they can ultimately sell but also do some good, we had submitted a preliminary review project to staff in July 2006, which included a concept for 22 residential units with some higher level of affordability. I think it was about six units, actually it was. And a rezone to R2, something similar to Shoreline Villas, which is directly across the street. And we thought it was an option that might be beneficial for this particular neighborhood because it was sort of a mixed neighborhood, and you have a lot of services within walking distance. You've got shopping centers, you've got bus lines, you've got offices, you've got recreational facilities. But at that time, when we came to the planning commission for a concept review, there was really a sentiment on the commission that it was more of a traditional single-family neighborhood, and that they would support a subdivision in that vein, but also, as Allison mentioned, it really encouraged the applicant to figure out a creative way to provide some affordable housing as part of the project. That's the 22-unit concept that had come before, just as a reminder. So with that, you know, once the applicant received that direction, we sat down with them and talked about what was possible. There's a couple of different options. One would be a simple cul-de-sac subdivision like you see to the north. But that didn't necessarily really respond to the planning commission's comments. And so our, our objectives were to do a, come up with a creative design for the site, figure out a way to incorporate some affordable units, while also responding to some of the concerns that we'd heard in our efforts to coordinate with the parent-teacher organization at Washington School, which has, they're, they have some concerns about how, having housing units directly abutting the school, and wanted some kind of buffer between the school district and the... and wanted some kind of buffer between the school district and the...any potential new units. And the neighbors to the north had a sort of a similar sentiment about that. Some kind of buffer would be nice. And then again, really wanting there to be a community benefit that comes out of this. That is a real desire for the church. So what we did was we came up with a concept that really creates what we like to call as a walkable sort of pedestrian-oriented neighborhood, rather than your traditional cul-de-sac that is more car-oriented. And this allows for a common space in between the units down the center. But they're very successful developments. In fact, I grew up on one in Manhattan Beach. And so the central aisle can either be landscaped. In some beach cities, they're not, but we would envision that in this particular project. And then a concept that has two private drives, one on the north and one on the south, which actually serves to create that buffer and facilitates this common space that would be constructed between the two...the two rows of units. And then, most importantly, we had really been working on a way in which we could provide affordable housing as part of the project. As Allison pointed out, you've got seven single-family lots that would have garages and a guest space, but we had started a conversation with Habitat for Humanity because one of the members of the congregation is actually on Habitat's board. And there was a lot of interest in maybe working out a deal with that particular organization because they're really a wonderful organization and have had some successful projects in the city so far. And we think there's a couple of ways in which you can go about that, but they're here today to speak to their level of interest in the project. They did submit a letter that says they're really interested. And one of the things that I think we can address today is how this mixes in with our inclusionary housing program. And our vision, and certainly we'd have to work with staff at Housing and Redevelopment as well as planning staff, but, you know, this is just a concept at this point, but the thought would be that instead of paying in lieu fees through the inclusionary housing ordinance, that the church would sell the lot to Habitat for Humanity for a reduced rate, more...probably more than the actual fee that would be required. As you saw, the standard fee for this level of subdivision would be about $123,000. The church is interested in providing a sales price that is below that as well, so that that would be...that could be the contribution of this development toward an affordable housing project. And that's all contingent upon actually entering an agreement with Habitat. But that's the road that we're actually hoping to move down if we can get support from the planning commission, that this is a good design. So this shows the layout that we had submitted, and actually shows some building envelopes on there, and then these are private yards that could be provided. And this shows the configuration with three units that are on the zero-lot line, they're attached to one another, and then they have one-car garages at the back. And here's a colored site plan. And actually, this shows that you could have a series of sort of central gathering areas as you come down the path. And this actual site plan is based on the model that I just showed you with the buildings in the exact same location. So the idea is that you sort of experience a series of little gardens as you come through this neighborhood. And these are areas that are...allow neighbors to meet and talk, and children to play, and it's really quite a lovely experience to live on one of the...in one of these types of developments. And then you can see that the two driveways are provided along here, which will create that buffer to the school. And the blue line actually shows where that property line would be running down the center of that walk-street area. And that just gives you an aerial perspective of what it might be like in that development. And as Allison mentioned, this is truly a straight subdivision, but we developed these materials so you could really have an idea of what kind of a space this would be like once it was developed, and can certainly be conditioned to include these features. Oops, sorry. Here's another perspective of one of the little courtyard areas. And that's a view down from one of the decks in the...one of the units. And then this is along the driveway that shows the guest space here, and then the garages here. And then these are just photographs of other successful walk-street developments in Southern California. And two of these, I think, are in the beach cities in Hermosa, Manhattan, and then one is maybe from Northern California, and then the other are from Venice. And they're really great places to live. I have to tell you, as a kid, I mean, the kids just played up and down the walk-streets, you know, riding big wheels or trikes or skateboards or whatever it was, and it really is family-oriented. So key issues that we're asking you to comment on today is whether or not you feel like the walk-street concept is something you could support. We think it would be a really successful project in that neighborhood, and think it sort of fits in with that concept of the neighborhood. You know, you have people that will be able to walk to the market, they'll be able to walk to the drugstore, they'll be able to walk to the school to play, they'll be able to walk down to Shoreline Park and La Mesa Park. And so it's a really pedestrian-oriented area. And then whether or not you support the provision of the affordable units within the project. And we think it's a great idea, and it's a way to actually get some community benefit out of this that's beyond the standard payment of fees for inclusionary housing. And then, so if you do agree then that affordable housing is suitable use in this area, then there's two ways to go about doing it. As Allison laid out for you, one way is it's a subdivision, you get three smaller lots, it's zero-lot line development. There's a series of modifications that have to go along with that, but that's really more of a technical issue, I think. It's kind of like, if the big-picture idea is good, how do we get there from a technical perspective? And in that configuration, you get three affordable units. And then the other way to do it, which was our original thinking, was rezone one of the lots and have it be...rezoned to R3 so that you could develop a condominium project similar to the types of projects that Habitat's either had approved and has developed or is currently proposing in the community. And you get four units out of that. So this just shows you an example. This is the layout of the three units that we'd seen. And that gives you an idea of what an elevation from Lighthouse would be of that unit type. And then here's the other concept with the four units. And that shows the three units are attached here, they have some private yards here, and then a...these are two stories, would be two stories, and then you have a single-story flat over the single-car garages there. And that's...while it's not in the same architectural genre as the other photographs that I've showed you, this is that unit type, as Allison showed you. Kind of is like a big house where you have a...it doesn't look like a condominium So Allison, and you've already began the discussion about how you ensure whether or not this lot or lots would be developed for affordable units. And as Scott Vincent spoke to, I think there's a way in which you can condition the MAP so that happens. But we do have strong interest from Habitat, and I think if we get support from the planning commission, and they'll talk to you this afternoon about it, but that we could move forward with some kind of relationship with Habitat and ultimately sell that to them. So in conclusion, we really are supportive of this walk-street idea, if you can't tell. It's...it sort of brings this bungalow courtyard style that we see in our downtown areas that are in our mixed-use neighborhoods or in our multifamily neighborhoods to a single-family development. And I think it would be a nice addition to the community there. We think that the proposal does actually address the comments that we heard at the planning commission in coming up with a single-family design, and one that could include some affordable units. It addresses the concerns that we heard from the PTO, and actually even the school district, I see a representative from the districts here, we had met with them as well, and then the neighbors to the north that...when we had heard from them at the last concept review. And it creates our...an opportunity to get affordable units actually on the ground rather than just payment of fees, and I think would really enhance the neighborhood. And so I'll just leave this slide up. This really just talks more or less about what the direction we're looking for from the planning commission today that I've already discussed. I think, you know, the church probably doesn't necessarily have a preference about which way in...which we could pursue the affordable units. Habitat may have a preference. And certainly, I feel like when you have an opportunity to get four over three, that's a better solution for our community because there are so many people in need. But that's certainly...we're open to the direction from the commission. And I just want to make sure I respond to the question that you had, Commissioner White, which was whether those lots that are proposed for the single-family are not meeting the minimum standard. And they actually do. There's a note on there. Right, yeah. Those are...you don't exclude the driveways. Yeah, because it's private. Right. So if I'm...that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
A question, Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you speak a little more about the logistics of the bill...of the building and sale of units, i.e. I had a question about could the homes be built, the market-rate homes be built, and the affordables not be built, for example? Or would...how would those...how do you envision the interrelationship between the construction of the market rate and the affordable units?
Sure.
Factually, so to speak.
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner White, as staff noted at the beginning of her presentation, this is really a straight subdivision, and it's the sale of lots. So there really isn't any control over actually when those units would get built. The objective of the church is to sell all of the lots to one developer. And there'll be, you know, there can be CCNRs that guide the development of those lots, so there's this...that we can ultimately achieve the objective of that walk-street vision that we have. But tying the sale and development of those single-family lots to the affordable lots, I'm not sure how you would do that, and I think it's a slight...it's a little bit unusual. My guess is, in this market, you'd probably see Habitat moving forward before you would see those market lots moving forward, but can you speak to that, Scott?
Yes. Mr. Chair, the inclusionary housing ordinance anticipates the construction of the affordable units concurrent with or prior to the construction of the market-rate units. I...whether we proceed with this project as complying with the inclusionary ordinance or proceeding with it as part of the city's bonus density program and otherwise some other process, I think we'd be looking to the inclusionary housing ordinance's process as to how this would...as the starting point of the conversation, how this would play out. That, as Ms. Plowman mentioned, probably would preclude the sale of the individual market lots to individual owners where they would each proceed with construction at their own pace. It would basically...the only practical way it would work would be one developer purchasing the lot or purchasing the subdivision, and then either that developer constructing all of the units, or that developer constructing some of the units and subcontracting with Habitat to construct the...or some other low-cost provider to construct the affordable units. So as we're sitting here kind of thinking about how this would play out, I...my thinking right now would be to look to the inclusionary housing ordinance and its processes as the guiding principle of how the city expects low-cost housing to be provided, and the timing of it, and that process. But the actual identity of any of how that works out, who is the one that develops it in the end, that will be determined by...in some ways, by the nature of the agreements or the nature of the conditions, but it's not tied to any particular provider.
Let me add to that for a second, because I think there's another way to look at this. They could go forward and just pay fees and be done with it. And then there's, you know, that money goes into the pot, and that goes to fund some other housing projects somewhere else in town. What we're...what we're looking at doing is...and we could even funnel the money through the city and then to Habitat, but what we want to do is give the money...I mean, we'd sell the lot to Habitat for that reduced rate, and even at a greater reduction that would be required for inclusionary. But if you think about it like that, is we're just paying...the applicant's going to pay fees. And then those fees are going to go to build Habitat's units on that lot. That's kind of how I would think about it, because it's a little bit cleaner that way.
And it may be a little bit more of a detail, Mr. Chair, than is appropriate at this point, but I was still curious, figuring that you have been noodling on this for a while, and you have thought some of these things through.
Sure.
One other question I have is about the walk-street and the open spaces, which I didn't glean from the...from the work that was submitted. I didn't get that, maybe because we didn't get a landscape plan, that your renderings and so forth were much more...gave a much stronger picture of that sense. And would those...I'm curious to know what those spaces...what the scale of those spaces would be, and I presume that then they would be committed in the subdivision to...I mean, what makes it interesting is the...or not...what at least intrigues me is the sort of the communal aspect of it, and that even though you own it, it's...I'm imagining even that an association might be maintaining it, and so forth and so on. So could you speak to that a little bit? Would you see that as a committed...are those...as those being committed spaces for communal use, I presume, not public, but at least communal?
Right. Mr. Chair, Commissioner White, exactly. I mean, right now, the way it's drafted on the subdivision plan, obviously, there's a lot lost between this and that. But the concept is that there would be at least a 16-foot easement that would run up the center of that...of those lots. And that area...Daddy, can you speak to the...what the dimension is on that?
Just want to speak about it for a moment. Mr. Chair, commissioners, right now, you're looking at the 16-foot easement. That was where we were when we kind of started with this. And in order to prepare for this hearing, we kind of took it a little bit further and realized that, hey, there was some potential to actually create some more communal spaces rather than just a sidewalk down the middle. So what would happen is that the subdivision would delineate an easement that basically follows the pattern of open space that you're seeing here. So it's kind of zigzag, you might say, through the development. That would be a mutual easement that would be able to be enjoyed by all of the...all of the lots in the subdivision, and then there would be some sort of a joint-use maintenance agreement that would govern the land...the maintenance, et cetera, and upkeep of those areas. That's how it would ultimately be.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Ms. Larson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So obviously, this is just conceptual, but I did want to acknowledge the receipt of the letter from Washington School and their concern about the parking on the street. And Lighthouse is very tight for parking. It's true. Is there...are there any guest parking allowances figured in the development itself?
Yes, yeah. Chair Myers, Commissioner Larson. In the...as you can see on the site plan, each single-family lot has got a guest space. And that's actually over than what is traditionally required in a single-family subdivision like this. So we recognize that there were moments, in particular, when parking was really tight on Lighthouse, and wanted to provide for that. And I've had detailed conversations with the parent-teacher organization about that, and we've talked about ways in which we could try and make sure that there were no issues between the district and the...or the organization and the project, and in conflicts with the school.
So for the affordable, so there's...do you have a provision for them?
Actually, what we would be proposing, and it's a provision that's currently in your code for rentals that are low income, we would be providing a single garage, but we would be restricting, and this is through Habitat. Habitat, because they remain a member in their homeowners' association of a project this size, they're going to have a condition like you would find at Casa de las Suentes or something like that, that says you're only allowed to have one car. They're going to do an annual review, and as they will on a...we've got another project that's similar in nature that will be coming before the commission in not too long. So they'll review it annually to make sure that they only have one car registered to them, and then they'll be fined if they find that they have more than one car. So the city attorney's office has looked at that and thinks that that is really consistent with the provision that allows for in the code right now. So in short, we don't have guest spaces for...or two-car garages for the affordable units. We have a single-car garage, and we think-
The single-car garage. I was just concerned about-
Yeah, we don't have guest spaces right now for them.
For units and no guest provision at all.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a question for Ms. Plowman. When you were talking earlier about the lot area, following up on Commissioner White's question, that in this case, it's really based on the gross area, at least for all the... the, the inboard parcels, obviously, there's some public dedication along the street. Because it's a private drive, not public.
Correct.
With that being said, most all the, the market lots are over 8,500 square feet, when the, the minimum is 7,500. It looks like there's the potential to either have an additional market-rate lot, or take the additional area that, you know, over 1,000 feet from each of these seven, and actually have a little bit larger affordable lot, so that perhaps you could even detach the units as opposed to having a, a different style. So I don't know, what was the thinking in having all the market-rate lots, 1,000-plus square feet more than the required lot size?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bartlett. We, we looked at multiple ways in which you could lay, lay out the lots, and had sought actually to maybe get nine lots out of it potentially, so that you would have eight market rate. But in each configuration we looked at, it just didn't seem to work. That doesn't mean we couldn't make the affordable lots a little bigger, but I think that the style of development that most affordable, low-income developers like is attached units, because it's, it's less expensive for them to build and whatnot. So that's kind of the thinking that we had. We can certainly explore other ways in which it can be, they can be laid out, but at this point, we're more or less looking for whether or not you think it's a good idea that we even pursue that concept. But we're happy to entertain any ideas you might have.
I just was curious if you'd explored that, so, okay.
Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. My question is sort of twofold. One of them, actually, is, is pretty much what Commissioner Bartlett asked, but the, the configuration of the lots, have you, have you looked at just what you could do with the space that wouldn't require so many modifications, if any modifications at all? For example, when we look at the area map, we see the little cul-de-sac up above it, it has a public street coming in, it's got some lots coming off of it. Probably no or very few modifications required for something like that. Have you looked at something like that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jacobs, the, the most of the modifications really relate to the affordable component. So I think those mostly come off, if, if that doesn't happen, all but two come off the table, and the other two really relate to street drainage. We did look at a cul-de-sac option, I mean, we didn't personally feel like that was the best project for the site or the applicant, but you could probably get seven lots in there, but you'd have a pretty, you have a pretty significant sort of car-oriented development, and you've got this big paved area in the middle, rather than having something that we thought was more beneficial to the, the future owners of the, of the different units, which was a grassy play area that children could come out and ride their bikes or kick balls, or whatever it is they do. All right, thanks.
I have one question regarding if the four units were to go in, the unit, the one loft unit over the garage, its proximity to the school and the discussion with the school, I know that they're very sensitive to that second story.
Sure, sure. Mr. Chair, we'd certainly be willing to add conditions into the project that would talk about maybe placement of windows in that particular area, or dual-glazed windows, and I think they're mostly concerned about the future tenant that's going to be there. They don't want them to be impacted by the kids playing and the school bells ringing and whatnot. So, when we spoke, they said they just want to make sure that, you know, they're not looking straight down into the schoolyard, that we can plant some landscaping there, and that they have the ability to close their windows and sort of block out the noise that might be coming from the school. So we're happy to work with the PTO and come up with a solution that's workable for them.
Okay, Mr. Bartlett. Thank you.
One last question, actually, for staff. If the affordable units end up being, whether they're three or four but attached, wouldn't those go to Architectural Board of Review rather than Single Family Board?
Chair Myers and Commissioner Jacobs, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bartlett. If the units were pursued as a condominium, then yes, it would go to the Architectural Board of Review. If they're attached single-family homes on individual lots, then it would still go to the Single Family Design Board.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing for this project. We have a couple of speaker slips here. Our first speaker is Ed Gamble, to be followed by Joyce McCullough.
My name's Ed Gamble. I'm at 320 Lighthouse Road, which is directly north of the property. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. If this was a review for a project that would actually be built, then I would be supportive of the plan as described. It's significantly better than what you've seen before, which was 22 or 29 condos with 60-plus parking spaces and so on. Unfortunately, it's not a proposal that's going to be built. It's a proposal for a property that's currently for sale. So essentially, it's my belief that it's to establish a sales price for the property. What will then happen is that the property will be sold based on, say, this concept. Some years down the road, the developer will come in and have a different project, because, oh, circumstances have changed, costs have changed, and, oh, surprise, they need higher density. We move towards higher density, we have this room filled like we did before with the PTO, the teachers, the kids, and so on, objecting to it. So I think that, as currently planned, it should be rejected, because it's not going to be built. And the density now is on the threshold for the community, and when the developer comes by in a few years, we'll only be heading in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Joyce McCullough, to be followed by Dr. Walter Dukes.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission, Chair Myers. My name is Joyce McCullough. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Southern Santa Barbara County. As you all know, land is very scarce and very expensive, even under the economic conditions we find now. So Habitat for Humanity is always on the lookout for potential sites in which we can increase the city's inventory of affordable homes. And as you may know, we work with those whose incomes fall between 40% to 60% of area median income, and they're classified as very low to low income. Now, the owner of this property, as Ms. Plowman mentioned, we've had an association with a couple of members of our board that have attended the local congregation here. So we've had conversations over the past few years about this site, and tried to work together with the applicant to make sure that there was some concern and interest for affordable housing, and that is shared by, by the applicant. And so through those conversations, we have continually expressed our interest in participating with them as an opportunity for Habitat for Humanity to continue to be able to build affordable housing here in the city. And so we've talked about several ways this can be accomplished, and we're very interested. We don't have a formal agreement with the applicant at this point, because we're waiting to see what the Planning Commission and planning staff will approve. I must say, though, that I'm here to reiterate and reemphasize Habitat's very continuing interest in being a partner on this project, and, and be able to build more affordable homes in this area. If we could do four units, that would make us very, very happy. We currently have over 50 people standing by, waiting for us to build homes for them in Santa Barbara alone, so we, we would look forward to this opportunity to work with them, and I just wanted to come today to reiterate our continued interest in this project, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Walter Dukes, we are last speaker.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it's a great pleasure to be here today, and thank you for hearing my comments. I've been practicing on the mesa for about 30 years now, so I think I'm pretty familiar with the area. As a matter of fact, I am the developer of 1809 Cliff Drive, the mixed-use property that's on the corner of Lighthouse and Cliff Road. So I'm familiar with some of the issues associated with Lighthouse. As you know, Lighthouse is a very narrow road, and it serves quite a number of entities down that road. We have El Faro, which is the cul-de-sac just below our building, and we have the Lazy Acres and the shopping center that exists there, as well as the school and the condominiums that are next to the school. So it's, it's been a real problem, I, I know you're aware of it, for the, for the city, because they've had to try and figure out how they could provide parking for all of these structures that exist there, as well as provide adequate access to the school and all the businesses. So you may be aware that the, the way it is now, there is no parking on the west side of the road in the morning, there's no parking on the north side of the road in the afternoon during the school, school part of the year. I have a photograph here, actually, that I took at 8:00 this morning, and I'd be happy to provide that for you. I'll get it to you in a minute. But it shows that there, it is, it's quite congested on that street in the morning and in the evening, and throughout the day, that all of the parking spaces are taken. So we're very concerned as a homeowners' association, property owner's association, for the parking situation that exists there. As I take a look at this, and I see that they have one guest parking space for the homes, and no guest parking spaces for the, for the affordable units, I wonder where these people are going to park, because there actually is no parking. The Lazy Acre parking lot fills up, and so people come over to our lot, they park, they go, they shop, they come back, they take their stuffs out of their shopping carts, and they put, leave the shopping cart in our parking lot. So we see the effects of the lack of parking there, so I'm very concerned about that. Also, these driveways that exist in this project would preclude any parking on the driveway, because that's going to be a fire access road, I'm quite sure. And I'm sure the applicant is aware of that. So traffic is a consideration. The reason I built 1809 Cliff Drive was to have a place for me to practice dentistry. I stood on the, on a ladder in the back of a truck on the lot to see what my view would be, and there I built my office specifically so I could see that view. Well, right now, the view has been quite impeded by the trees that have grown up over the years, and if this project goes forth as proposed, or as the other gentleman said, proposed in some other way, it will completely eliminate my view of the ocean. I'm very concerned about that, because it significantly depreciates the value of my property. In addition, we have a mixed unit, mixed-use building, so there's three residences in this building also, and all those will be impacted by the, by the structural impediment to the view. So I would like the commission to consider, when reviewing this project, that there are procedures which you can take which can help preserve that view, such as a height limitation on this project. We would like to see some story polls that would show us exactly how the project is going to impact the view that we have. So I would like you to take that into consideration as you, as you go forward with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this project? Seeing, yes? You'll step forward, and then if you'll fill out one of these slips for, when you're finished, for the, for our secretary.
I have to, I'm actually, have to leave momentarily, but my name's Nika Gwynn, and I live at 313 Celita del Sol. I'm a new owner there, and I'm just behind the property backing onto Lot 5 on the pictures. And I just wanted to mention my concern in looking at the plans and seeing that there was a very tiny easement or setback between our property, which backs right onto the fence, and their property, and again, also have concerns about height, because they would literally be looking right into our garden and into our house if it's more than one story, and even perhaps one story, so that's my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, I'll close the public hearing for this, for this project, and bring it back to the commission for further questions and comments. I would like to start off. Mr. Thompson.
Could I ask staff to explain a question I have about, has anybody looked into drainage in the area and how that would be dealt with?
Chair Myers, a drainage report was submitted for this project, and so the analysis has been done. That was assuming building footprints that are very similar, if not identical, to the ones that were shown on the applicant's slides, so the project would be designed to be consistent with our current stormwater management policies.
And would that be including onsite detention?
Yes, that would include some onsite detention, because there would be more permeable or more impermeable area than currently exists. So it does include some onsite retention or detention. The specifics haven't been worked out at this point. One of the ideas is that some of these walkways through the center of the site, as well as the guest parking areas, could be permeable to assist with that.
Any further comments, Mr. Thompson?
Okay, you want me to start out? I, I think that the idea of the pedestrian orientation is a good idea. Obviously, splitting the driveway is not the most efficient layout from the standpoint of maximizing your land use, but it does certainly provide the buffer from the school. And given that you're going to do that kind of an orientation, making the pedestrian orientation of the project is, is a good way to do it, and it's an excellent concept. I am not convinced that the small lots are the best way for the project to proceed, especially with the zero-lot line concept of development, because what we're eventually doing, or effectively doing, is making a, an R3 out of a, trying to keep it a single-family, but we're effectively making it into a multifamily, which may not be appropriate in the neighborhood. And also, when you're talking about having a homeowners' association to deal with common issues there, mixing those kind of uses between the single-family homes and what would effectively be small condominiums may produce problems for the people that would be living there in the future, and something that we don't have to necessarily deal with now, but people that live there in the future might. I have lived with several developments where I was in a homeowners' association, and even without these disparate uses, we had enough problems. So I would suggest that that may be something that should be considered. It seemed like the artistic representations that you depicted there show a little bit different dimensions than the, the maps that we were given, making it look a little more open, and I think that when you look at the size of the lots, it's not going to be the amount of open spaces maybe some of the artist's depictions seem to render. So, for me, that's a little bit of a problem. I, I'm trying to look at the, at the map, see how much open space we would have, and how we'd put that all together. Another issue to consider is fire access. I don't know if you've looked at it, but the ability for fire department access to the rear units and having adequate turnaround for trucks. Typically, on a narrow driveway, the fire department requires a hammerhead for turnaround. And also, the distance to the rear units from the closest hydrant or truck location seem to be a little bit further than the typical 150 feet maximum that the fire department wants to see. Parking, as proposed, appears to be to have a potential for neighborhood impacts, and I'm not in favor of providing a project that's already set up in the beginning to cause parking problems. I understand what you're saying about restrictions on the low-income units, but it's difficult to enforce something like that unless somebody's there all the time, and it's going to leave it up to the homeowners' association to try to enforce it. I asked about the drainage. That would require a little more discussion if we got into the specifics of the plan as to where a detention basin would be onsite that would integrate with the design of the, of the project. And then I guess lastly is, we're talking about a new concept here, which, while we may have a proposal on the table right now, there's no guarantee that this isn't going to be, that this won't be changed as it moves forward, since you've already discussed that the proposal is to sell the, to sell the project. So I'm a little bit nervous about that. Obviously, we could condition the map to try to get some of those conditions locked in, but it is something that gives me a little pause for, for consideration. So those are my basic initial reactions to the concept.
Thank you. I'll just move down the line here, Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Myers. Commissioner Thompson hit on many of my questions, in particular, fire access and the drawings. Seeing these drawings was, they look very different from what I imagined looking at the plans, and usually when I have that much surprise, I ask, I think maybe we need a continuance if we're really going to give adequate comment, because these drawings look lovely, but they, they, they don't look like, like what my, my first dry reading of the proposal would lead me to expect. In particular, the easements required down the middle, how those would be maintained, the sense of spaciousness the sense of spaciousness, or these true proportions, and so on. And so I would want to see more accurate drawings before I could consider something like that. However, they are lovely, and it would, it's a very nice kind of housing concept to see. I think I was one of the commissioners last time that asked that that 22 units be reduced to a bungalow court. Now, bungalow court is usually one-story buildings around a big grassy area. This is not quite that. These are big houses, but they do have some grassy area that they share, so it's sort of on its way. Not quite there yet. Oh, I need to backtrack. I did have an ex parte communication with the applicant shortly after our initial concept review, at which point they were going from the 22 units to a more residential model. And I got a preview of this project at that time, but not these drawings, only the concept. And then also, along the lines, as Mr. Thompson said, the parking is an issue. And parking, along with traffic ingress and egress off of Lighthouse, has been an issue for me on this project as well. While from one perspective, this is a great site for more housing because it does have walkability to stores and restaurants and offices, on the other hand, it's very constricted in terms of getting in and out with a car. And I find that an unbeatable limitation on this site. In addition, we have another project going in further down the street, the 210 Miggs project, which I think is moving forward, and that will be adding additional people and cars to the neighborhood that's already constricted. And it's already a busy area, as the neighbors are telling us. The Lazy Acres parking overflows. I expect that employees and folks that can't find a parking spot, I've been in that lot many times and had to drive around, although I have never parked in your neighborhood. But the, I think of the Trader Joe's parking lot, which is always our flag to when we got it wrong and thought we were getting it right, in that this is already a very busy neighborhood and a very lively commercial district. And what if we were to say that we wanted to put some denser housing around Trader Joe's? Well, everyone would understand, that's a terrible idea because parking there is already so poor. Parking in this area is very poor, and ingress and egress is poor also. So despite the fact that on the map, it looks like a great place for dense housing, there are other elements in play that make it a place that needs a little more careful consideration in terms of how many people go into this particular site. So I agree with Mr. Thompson on the parking. We have a public benefit of affordable housing, but the public benefit should not be at such a great expense to the immediate neighborhood. There's a lot of modifications required to make this happen. If we were looking at Mahan's Rule and we said, is there another way to develop this property that would require fewer modifications, I think we'd be looking at a very different kind of project. I also think back to my early days on the commission when we would consider affordable housing in a condominium unit. There was a strong sense that there should not be a double standard, that the affordable units should be very similar to the market rate units. And clearly, that's not the case here. The market rate units are a whole different animal from what's being proposed for the market, and I have a problem with that as well. And then, lastly, I need the city council to confirm for me, we can't have granny units on this spot because my ideal would be maybe six nicely sized houses with granny units. Is that not possible?
Mr. Chair, what I said was that the-
Lots are too small?
That some of these lots, I don't know about the market rate lots specifically. My comment was directed mostly to the condominium units and that whether, how that played out with the inclusionary ordinance. They're in single-family zones, you can have granny units. There are lot size limitations, which I can look up in a moment, I don't have them off the top of my head. You may not be, it may not be that you could get the maximum number of lots on this, in this project, in other words, using the minimum zoning requirement and still get granny units. But you could do fewer lots and have lots that could satisfy the granny unit requirements, you just would have fewer. I'd have to look up what are the minimum requirements.
Got it, okay. But it's more based on the lot sizes than the area or the zone?
It's based on the whole panoply of things. You have setback requirements, you have lot area requirements, you have open yard requirements, and then you have parking requirements for secondary dwelling units. When you put that whole list of things together, you have to have a fairly good-sized lot in order to get a secondary dwelling unit.
You might be looking at, I don't know, 10 or 12 mods like we are today. So it wouldn't be that much different in the modifications. So those are my comments. I don't feel like ready to completely sum it up, but I don't find the project to be there yet, particularly the dissonance between the very lovely renderings and what I see on the map that we're being asked to approve.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Larson.
Chair, if I could pipe in about secondary dwelling units?
Sure. Mr. Cato?
The minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet, so it is possible, it does have to be attached. A big, well, an issue that would have to be considered strongly is the parking, because for a lot with a secondary dwelling unit, you need two covered parking spaces for the main unit, you need additional uncovered space for the secondary dwelling unit, and then, I guess, another guest parking space if that's, if it was going to be in this configuration. So we're talking about a good portion of land being taken up by parking. And, you know, so it would be possible, it probably wouldn't be possible with 10 lots or eight lots, I guess.
I'm comparing, no, I don't think it would be possible for eight lots. But we might potentially get a good number of market rate houses and a good number of affordable rental units, and have it be something that is more compatible with the neighborhood, having gone back to the neighborhood and looked at it and thought about what might be more compatible with the other houses that are there. If we're not going to do a standard cul-de-sac served by a public street, which would eliminate the need for some of those mods, then an alternative that appeals to me is a granny unit alternative for a number of reasons. And modifications can be requested for those two, just like today, we're making yards and setbacks and parking. I mean, this is a long list of modifications. And so my question is, in exchange for this long list of modifications, are we getting the best possible development for this site? Thanks.
Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm very much in the same vein. I'm very concerned by the mods and the parking. I am very familiar with the street, and it's a rough place to plan to park. I mean, you have to, there are trucks that go down that street, there's the school traffic, it's just very impacted. But I do love the idea, the concept of having that walkable center area. But on the plan, I noticed in your narrative presentation, it's a width of 16 feet, you said, I believe? I, it's just, it's a narrow, it's a narrow space in, you know, in actuality. 16 feet?
Chair, can I respond to that? Yes, your plan shows 16 feet, but as I explained earlier, it's going to be much wider. It's just a matter of how much of that, of the individual private areas of the lot are dedicated to the public. In our plan here, it will be wider than 16.
Thanks. Well, okay. But I love that concept, but I don't know that this is the best place for it. I'm just, I'm concerned for the neighbor in, behind five, I believe she said, either four or five, who would lose privacy, the zero lot line. It's just, it just feels like it's just being packed on there, and I'm concerned about that. And I'm not, I can't buy off on necessarily putting all of the affordable right at the street, right there with very little parking. That's going to mean that people are going to use that street for parking heavily. And there might be another place to put affordable on the site plan other than right there, or could they be moved around a little bit? There's so many ways to do it. But I'm feeling like Commissioner Jacobs' comment about how we integrate affordability into projects, we can't lose that. They need to be more seamlessly part of the grander plan. And so, this may, this begs neighborhood compatibility issues, I'm just concerned for it. So I can't give it a go right now. I mean, I'm not saying no forever and ever, but I don't want you to waste money and time of your applicants on something that I can't just embrace. So I would be a person who would say, let's continue it, I mean, it's, the project's in great hands, it just needs to breathe a bit. So that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, did you, did you, the applicants, run this by the fire department, this concept, or is this coming here first?
Chair Myers and Commissioner White, I can answer that question. This project did go through our pre-application review team review, so the fire department did take a look at it, and they confirmed that the access provided was adequate. They were not intending to use those private driveways to access the site, they can reach it other ways.
And then the zero lot line concept that I've heard people speak to, what are we referring to on the site plan? That's the zero lot line. I mean, there's the affordable units. Okay, so that's it? That's, those are the ones there? Okay. All right. Well, first of all, the cautionary portions of this project, I think, have been articulately, eloquently stated. I like the walk street. What I think is, where my comfort level is being exceeded is it looks like the scale of the houses themselves may be larger than, if those were smaller, then the bungalow court concept would start to come together, in my view. And another, well, to back up then, it looks like that maybe the dense, what's happened here is that, of course, the streets have been privatized, so that's how the lot, normally those would be, if it was a public street, then that square footage would be eliminated from the net square footage. And so that's a result of the two private driveways on either side, those are now part of the lots. So it may cause a little bit of a densification of the project. What I would want back out of that is a reduction in scale, that the houses be smaller, and that then we're kind of coming at it, as Ms. Larson said, it's breathing perhaps a little bit better. I appreciate the conundrum about the affordable units in the front. First of all, they somehow, they are going to impose more parking on that already impacted area, and so I would look at that and see if I could provide some more parking, whether it's tandem in front of the units that they're able to pull in, a guest is able to pull in in front of the one-car garage, something like that. Again, that would be an alteration of design, but I'm giving you a notion that, of something that would at least take some, again, would be providing breathing room for the project. I speak to the scale of the units. What we've been talking about in Plan Santa Barbara is how more market rate housing is not what we need. So you end up sort of getting pushed around pretty hard proposing market rate housing because we're finding ourselves, and I don't know that you folks are leading the pack in the affordable housing arena, but that's where the smaller scale of the units would at least be less unaffordable by design, shall we say, and less impactful to the neighborhood. Perhaps they're not as high, they're not as big, and not impacting as many views. Always, an issue that arises with this mixture of affordable and market is, how do you do CCNR, how do you do association dues that are, that the affordable folks feel is tolerable and relative to the market rate? It just is, it's a clash point, which I would want to hear about if this project does move So I'm feeling, I think unusually, I'm feeling less skeptical about this project than many of my colleagues, the scale coming down being the biggest issue. And I'm, I would want the project to be genuinely committed to this concept, wouldn't be just, oh, as one of the neighbors came in with, well, this could be, this will come in with something different when it actually comes back to be approved. No, it's a final map, it's nailed down with some very strong language and definition. So I feel comfortable that the city process would provide those assurances to the neighbors in the form of these minutes, in the form of the conditions of approval of the project that comes through. So as I say, unusually, I'm feeling less skeptical than my colleagues about this project. I think that that walk street has real merit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I wish we had had the complete presentation package in our packet, it would have saved a lot of angst in doing our homework. I like what I see on the screen, and I want to be assured that hopefully that's where we end up if this does move forward. So with that being said, I like the approach of trying to achieve the walk street concept and minimizing the road or driveway widths by creating buffers that both benefit the school and the other adjacent neighbors. What I'm struggling with is the sort of incompatibility of the attached affordable units just jammed into the corner. As I look at this site plan, the three market rate units that are on the same side of the property all have oversized lots. They could each be reduced by eight feet in width, which would give another 24 feet to work with on the affordables, which if you took it in the two zones of the property lines between the three units, you could have 12-foot separations in those two areas. We could eliminate all of the interior setback modifications, which is four of them on our list on the staff report, page four. We would also then have the additional width on each lot to have one more parking stall for each of those affordables, which would eliminate three more modifications for parking. So we can eliminate seven mods just by having those three market rate lots be the 7,500 square feet instead of 8,500. I like this concept of the affordables with three and the garages creating the buffer to the school as opposed to the other scheme that we saw that had four units with a unit on the second story above the garages and overlooking the school. But I think that would help because then the affordable units would also be detached so that it doesn't look foreign to this single-family neighborhood. So I could certainly support a project in that direction, but I think in order to move it forward, for me, I would either want to see well-defined building envelopes that would guarantee that as it comes back, that we get the walk street and people plaza areas that are making this work so that we know where the buildings are going to be placed and how they relate to each other. I think that would be necessary, or I think we should have a complete project that comes through, and if somebody else buys it and they want to do something different on the buildings, they have to come back. But at least that way, we've got it built in of what it is we're expecting, rather than only doing a subdivision and not knowing who's going to bring forward what and when. That solution also doesn't preclude the seven market rate homes from having the attached granny units, they're all large enough size. Those could even be included in addition to the affordable units. So this project could really offer even more benefits. So I think we have the opportunity to certainly- So, I think we have the opportunity to certainly provide more parking by widening those affordable lots. And there's certainly space over here if we needed to add an additional stall for a granny unit on one or several of those. That's a possibility. It's certainly not precluded. I think, you know, the other option to this project is not have the affordables and just do all market rate with the ability to have granny units. But again, I would like to see it at least come forward with the walk street concept and the split private drives. I'd be willing to support the private drive-related modifications, which are for the lot frudge modifications. But I think that we could practically whittle this modification list in half just by widening those three affordable lots and taking eight feet out of the other adjacent three market lots, and it would be pretty close. But I need to have more of these graphics included in what we're really approving rather than just the subdivision map that we've been given.
Thank you. Well, that's an exact direction that I was going to as well. One second. Okay. I don't know if I agree with the granny unit approach here. I'm very sensitive. The thing that's driving me the most here is the sensitivity of the traffic on the street and the parking. And I think by adding more units to this parcel, we just increase, dramatically increase the traffic. So, but I do see, and I was going in that same direction, Mr. Bartlett, was that, I'll get this to work here, that by reassociating these units a little bit so that you have this wonderful space in between and dropping these back and creating a little space here, that it alleviates one of the biggest problems that I have with the affordables, and that is the lack of an extra space of parking. It's the thing that's driving me altogether here because the design, I think, is absolutely really attractive. I really appreciate your presentation. I'm hearing from the rest of the commissioners, and I too would like to see this presentation laid out in plans a little bit better so that it could have been studied a little bit. I favor the four-unit affordable approach simply because of all of what has been mentioned by Habitat for Humanity and the desire to get those four units in here. If that fourth unit, that loft unit, can be done with some reasonableness in association with the school and that the parking can be satisfied on-site, a guest parking arrangement, I think that is the most critical thing that drives this. I think the way the, the fact that there is multiple units, two family units across the street, that we're in a neighborhood that has, you know, it's walkability directly to shopping and that there's that kind of commercial activity in the neighborhood, that there's also single-family residents right next door, I think that this is a design project that sort of blends in with all of that. So, I wouldn't be adverse to rezoning that one lot to be able to, you know, bring that kind of affordability into this area. The biggest thing that, again, the biggest thing that, the concern I have is parking and traffic on the street. There's something we simply can't get around. And if somehow we can alleviate the parking by providing it on-site for the affordables, I think we're a long way there. I think it's wonderful, the walk street is just, you've done a really good job. And I should mention as well that I also had an ex parte communication with the applicant since they were last here. And where you've come, I think, is really admirable. It's really nice. Everything else has been mentioned. I certainly would be in favor of conditioning the map to have the restrictions associated with it as. And Mr. Bartlett's idea of having a project come forward, I know that's difficult, but having a design project come forward is a good one. I think Mr. Pike wanted to speak.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I did want to respond to some of the questions that have been raised and hopefully reassure you a little bit. I just, I don't know, we may not have emphasized this enough, but I think you understand that the alternative to this is a seven- or eight-unit subdivision with a great big cul-de-sac, 80-foot cul-de-sac here and a 40-foot road. And we really just felt that that was not the superior design for this project. We still end up with the eight lots that you would have in that type of subdivision, but in a much more attractive and livable situation, more appropriate in that neighborhood where you have all this pedestrian access and walkability. So, we're very pleased to hear that you, most of you seem to favor the walk street and this communal open space approach to the project. I do want to assure you and also the gentleman who spoke with some concern about what would come back to you in the future, this, of course, is a concept review. We're here just, we just wanted to get a response so that we know what to do when we come back to you for a final approval of this. We're prepared to have building envelopes defined and have conditions of approval that define the easement, open space areas, and any of the sort of features that we need to be assured are going to be incorporated in this development. That's not a problem. And then, obviously, like any other piece of property, if a developer does come back and say wants to do something different, you'd be back to square one or coming to you for modifications. You'll have all the opportunity to reconsider those. So, that's not, we don't anticipate that happening. As far as the parking is concerned, that seems to be a big concern. And we do have that guest, extra guest space for each unit, which is more than would normally be required. If there was just eight units, you would have two guest spaces. We have a total of seven. And I think it's clear that we could provide more guest spaces, and we're going to work on that in our next iteration of this to try and get to those. We talked about fire department. Certainly, I think it's been cleared up that the modifications are primarily have to do with the affordable units. And so, that really brings me to, you know, if there's support for the walk street and all of that aspect of the project, it just brings me to the question of what is really the, where's the support and what's the level of support for which of those two alternatives? If we, with the three unit, I can see that there's a possibility to do some additional parking there. And I think Commissioner Bartlett's suggestion of maybe taking some of this open space and putting it into this area and maybe just considering some other ideas is a really good one. That was very constructive. I just, I want to point out, though, that the lots, when we dedicate some of this open space here and we have the driveways over here, the private yard area requirement is pretty much delineated right here. And I'm just concerned that I wouldn't want to have to reduce the private, or have a modification then for private yard area in order to achieve the goal of getting more room here unless, you know, we hear from you that that's supportable, that that's a good trade-off in that case. So, right now, the lots are designed with the neighborhood preservation ordinance in mind. The units would not exceed anything that's required under that ordinance and the single-family design guidelines, et cetera. These are not large houses. These are, we're looking in the neighborhood of maybe 2,000 square feet, 2,200, 2,300 at the most, some variation like that with the two-car attached garages. So, we're not talking about big houses, you know, 3,000 or 4,000 square feet by any means. And so, in conclusion, I think really what we're, we're still a little bit unclear is just where we are with respect to the majority of commissioners on the affordable units, you know, what we want to do there. Do we, you know, is a three-unit alternative superior in the majority's view? Is a four-unit one a possibility if we can provide some parking, et cetera? I think those are the questions I think comes down to.
Danny?
Thank you, Chair Myers. Commissioner Bartlett brought up a point that I was going to bring up. You know, it seems like the three affordable units in this configuration is driving 95% of the modifications. I mean, all except one. Maybe it's not, maybe it's not an appropriate location for affordable. If they just took those three and made it into one more market rate unit, I mean, then there's eight lots with eight guest parking spaces. They've still got the, they've still got the driveways to give separation from the neighbors to, you know, either side. I don't know. It's worth considering, maybe?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Larson. You had something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to not neglect to mention, please continue working with your neighbors, maybe visit the doctor's office. And, you know, while we're in this conceptual state, that's a great time, even though we can't protect private views, to create a, you know, sort of get an overview, you're good at that, look down and say, okay, this is the slot, you know, as you're siding. And also, not to forget your neighbor on the rear who came and made public comment, just to, just to know that we're not ignoring anything. And we can, at this, at this point, it's a great time to do that and establish those relationships and work so that we're not on the ground with stuff and trying to manipulate it later. And I always thought we could sprinkler in the rear. You know, when I was on ABR and we would make the, some places on the Mesa had those long driveways, and there would be a second residence in the back, and they would subdivide the two, and then there would be one in the rear. And the carrying capacity of the driveway wasn't such, they couldn't provide a turnaround and the carrying capacity was light, they sprinkled that last unit and then they, and that satisfied the requirement. I can be wrong on that. I mean, I'm just recalling that, and I thought I put it out there just for safety reasons. But I just want to encourage you to continue working with your neighbor, neighbors, and, you know, and that's, that's the road to there.
Ms. Larson, when you have the mic, would you like to give your preferences to what you'd like to see done with the affordables?
Well, I did, I did mention, you know, there's always, I've raised a lot of kids, and I found that whenever I gave two choices, they would pick one of the two. And that was the way to go. It's nap time. You want to take your nap in your bed or your brother's? Oh, okay, I'll take it in my brother's bed. And then you choose. I don't want to hamper your creativity by making an opinion right now. I would like to see this come back and have a lot of consideration as to placement of affordables. Do they have to be grouped together? What's going on? I don't want to have to pick from those two. It's not on the menu for me. So, maybe there's, maybe there's something else. And I want to, I don't want to neglect that. So, I don't want to have to pick from those two. So, I don't want to restrict it at the concept level.
I think, Commissioner Larson, I think the question is firstly, should we provide the affordable units on-site? And then, I appreciate very much your comment that we should be creative and try and solve the problems that have been, you know, raised here at this meeting. But I think fundamentally, should we provide those affordable units? Is it appropriate? They are not going to be the same as the single-family houses. We know that. They're going to be smaller units, they're going to be in keeping with the kind of affordability, you know, in terms of cost and sales that Habitat for Humanity can provide. So, that's a given. And understanding that, is it appropriate to have those included in this development fundamentally? And then, and then as to, you know, your preference, three or four, you know, some people might say, well, hey, let's have the more the better. And others might say, well, in this case, three would be better. So, those are kind of the questions.
I understand. And so, with that given, the given, I would say, for me, it's a huge press to put affordable, if you're asking me, although I drool over it. It's a, it's a great thing, but this may not be the appropriate location due to the constraints of the neighborhood and everything that's going on there. Even though you might say, oh, it's really great with the traffic and everything else going on, I just, I think maybe it's not the place. So, no nap today. That's, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pike, can I get a point of clarification before we move on in regard to one of Mr. White's questions in regard to that lot, that affordable lot, and the homeowners' association, responsibilities of that lot to the other homeowners for maintenance purposes? Is it being separated out altogether, or will they participate?
Well, Chair Myers, that's a good question. All of the lots are going to be individual fee lots, of course, and then there will be these easements. And so, again, this will be, in the case of the three units, each one of these would be an individual fee lot, but there would be some sort of joint use agreement to which all of the lots will contribute proportionally, and that would be the case with these affordable units as well.
Okay.
But it's not the same as a condominium homeowners' association. They don't have the same ability to, let's say, spend a huge amount of money on some part of the project that would be disproportionate to the ability of these owners to pay. We're talking strictly about the maintenance of the common area, that sort of thing.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jacobs?
Excuse me. Habitat also has its own association. They have their own sort of framework for the ownership there.
Well, one of the things about this project, and I'm experiencing it as we're having our discussion, is it's trying to be all things and trying to do two things at once. It's trying to behave like single-family. It's trying to behave like multifamily, trying to corner out one part that's going to be multifamily and the rest will be single-family, sort of, except it'll have this easement down the middle. Trying to have it both ways. And I'd like to see the project decide, is this a single-family development or is this a multifamily development? It's in an E3 zone. That's single-family. And the, one commissioner pointed out, well, there's multifamily across the street, and that's true. That multifamily has access directly onto Miggs Road. So, it's got a whole different setup in terms of egress and ingress and parking and where it accesses. This is a single-family neighborhood. And so, my thinking is to follow that neighborhood context and to say, let's decide this is a single-family development. Now, having said that, what happens then to the desire to have affordable units? Because that's an honorable desire, and I don't want to not discuss it. And for me, granny units answers that. I've talked about it before, the difference between ownership units and rental units. The city needs both, and they both have a place in the constellation of planning. So, I would, I would say that rental units in this neighborhood would serve a great affordability purpose and may be better than some very small and kind of puzzled-together affordable units that would be ownership units. So, I certainly can't support what's proposed here today. I could support Commissioner Bartlett's proposal a little more, but what I would prefer would be to see something that is more compatible with a single-family neighborhood and that takes its cues from single-family residences and incorporates the affordability units within the houses as granny units. And perhaps there would be modifications tied to that in terms of coming back here and asking for parking mods. But when we look at the parking complications of this project, ownership units versus granny units, granny units are going to be rentals, and the people that own the units and rent them out are going to have some control over their tenants and how they behave in terms of how many cars they have. They're going to be self-monitoring unit as opposed to ownership units where that might not be the case. So, I would, I would be looking at the neighborhood context and looking more at a single-family model.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if Mr. Pike was counting me as being one of the ones that was in favor of the overall layout with the split driveways. Maybe I gave the wrong impression when I said that that's not the normal way you would attack this, but given the circumstances with the school, I think it's a good way to go, and I especially like the layout around the central courtyard. The issue with this project as it's presented is, as we've all been talking about, the attempt to force-fit the affordable units at the minimum level we can get away with as far as size into a corner of the, of the project. And it's, like Commissioner Jacobs said, it seems like it's trying to be two things at once. As far as answering Teddy's question, should we provide affordable units? That's a commendable goal, but I don't think what's proposed, either the one that's up there now or the four unit, in my mind, is the best way to go. If we go with the E3 zoning and zero lot line and sub-sized, significantly sub-sized lots for the E3 zoning, we're effectively for the E3 zoning, we're effectively trying to build a multiple-family building and call it something else. You know, if you have zero lot line and you want to build it all at one time, it's effectively a three-unit apartment or a three-unit condominium, but we're calling it three single-family homes in an E3 neighborhood. But it isn't that. In the future, there's all kinds of issues with individual ownership of those and maintenance and so forth in the future. And the neighborhood compatibility has been covered quite a bit already. If we go to rezoning that and calling it R3 and then building three or four units, now you're faced with maybe having two separate homeowner associations, one for all the other ones for the common area maintenance, and then one for the condominium that's made in the corner. And then, the two homeowner associations have to have internal agreements for reciprocal easement access and so forth. So, you're creating yourselves a lot of problems by trying to force-fit the affordable units in this configuration, in my opinion. If you still want to proceed that way, maybe something along the lines of what Commissioner Bartlet was talking about, of opening things up a little bit more. And maybe the affordable units are on slightly smaller lots, but one-third of the size of the, the zoning requirement is, is pretty small lots. And then, as I mentioned, all the other issues that come with trying to have zero lot lines and so forth. So, I, I think it's a commendable goal to try to provide the affordable units, but I don't think either of the two concepts that have been presented here are the best way to approach it with the constraints on the site.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree that the, the biggest challenge is the, is the south, is the, is the affordable component. And a thought that came to my mind was to go to two units instead of three. And does that loosen things up, provide the, the parking and so forth and so on? So, just throwing that out there as another piece of the mix.
Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I, I do think there are two choices here, and I elaborated on that. Either you do the single-family and forget the affordables, but if we do that, I want you to stay with the walk-street concept that you have. With that, you really have enough area to do nine lots. I think what's hampering you right now is that this line in the middle is equal-spaced. You know, if you move it offset, you'll be able to get five lots on one side and four on the other, and that all, that really plays into how you've tried to stagger the homes anyway. So, if you have five and four, you get those open spaces that are staggered. So, every house looks into an open space and you still keep all those view quarters for the uphill neighbors. So, you could do nine single-family homes with the ability to have granny units. Who knows that we would get them? We only have 10 in town now, so the chances are pretty slim. So, that's one way to go, or you could take that same concept, take away two of the market lots and create affordables. But I would do it as I suggested before, spread them out so you can meet the setback requirements and eliminate seven or eight modifications off your list. So, that would be my recommendation, and be curious to see where it comes back.
I think I pretty much agree with those. I, I still have reservations about the granny units, exactly, will they get built? And, and also the restrictions that are placed on the homeowner regarding the granny units. I mean, if they get built along with the homes, then what does that do to the, you have to pretty much sign up for, for quite a lot of things when you have a granny unit. So, I mean, there's a lot of complications with the granny units, probably just as many, if not more, with the, with the affordables. I, I guess the, the three-unit configuration is probably, given, given everything considered, is probably the, the best way to go rather than a four-way. I would love to see a 60-foot building with about 10 units in there, joking. But we have some more comments here. Ms. Jacobs?
I see Mr. Cotto raising his hand, maybe he, and I wanted to address this to him regarding the city's granny unit policies. And I know that, and I hate to drag old plan Santa Barbara in where it's not needed, but we have talked about changing granny unit policy. And, and there is a, a desire to loosen some of those regulations exactly for this reason. And another project that comes to mind are the Laguna Court buildings, which were condos. And I think Mr. White was a, one of the decision-makers on that. But it was a condo project set up like a bungalow court. Some of the condos have income units attached to them, and really, it is a benefit to the person buying the home because they are buying something with an income stream attached to it. So, it's, it's a positive for the, for the homebuyer. And in these economic times, any positive a homebuyer can get is a good thing. So, if, I don't know, Mr. Cotto, could you speak just for a moment to the city's? I know our current policies are what they are, but there is some thought that in the future granny units might become easier to create.
Chairman Myers and Commissioner Jacobs, I, I know that it has been a topic of discussion in Plan Santa Barbara, and when we had the, I don't know, the second or third round of the public input, that was one of the questions that was put to the, the participants. And we did get quite a favorable response, more, more than I thought would, thought that we would get, since historically, you know, it seems like most homeowners' associations and, and people have been against them. I don't know how that is, how that is going to be incorporated into the whole Plan Santa Barbara, gee, sorry, plan. I, I don't know how they're, how we will be addressing that. It's something I'm interested, and I'll try to get back to you next, next time, maybe during the announcements.
I think a lot of the discussion revolves around the restrictions associated with those, primarily being affordable to medium or low-income, ultra-low.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
So, I mean, that's, yeah, it's a consideration.
And actually, I, since my, my mic is still on, I, I had a thought as we were talking about it. You know, with the affordables, we're, these, with us as staff, and I think some of the planning commissioners are having an issue because they're really a triplex, right? I mean, they show three separate lots, but they're built right together. What if they were split up? What if you had each of those, like interspersed throughout, throughout the development? So, it's big, little, big, little, or something like that. That way, you might have a, you might have zero lot line, but you could at least have the setbacks of the other, of the adjacent lots. You know, right now, that's a triplex, which we, you know, it's not even allowed in this zone, you know, and the way we do it. Anyway, just a thought.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I hadn't said anything about granny units, and I just would like to make a, a little bit of an observation. One of the issues with adding so-called granny units to existing single-family houses is that, as Mr. Vincent pointed out, there are a lot of issues with setbacks in parking and, and drive access to get to parking and so forth. But if a project was considering adding guest quarters when they were originally designed, a lot of those could be designed out right from the beginning. And that doesn't mean that somebody who bought the house would have to use it as a rental. They could use it as guest quarters or as a home office or whatever, if that's what they chose to do. But they would also have the option, and if you were making a homeowners' association project, it would be covered in there, they would have then the option of using it as a rental because it was designed to be compatible as a rental in the first place. That's just an observation. I'm not advocating it or one way or the other.
Bartlet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, that was my point. I don't think we're in a position where we can advocate for granny units or deny them. If the lot is big enough to allow somebody to have a granny unit and they can provide the parking, or if the parking requirement goes away in Plan Santa Barbara, that's up to the developer, whoever builds, builds the home. I don't think we can dictate that you have to build a granny unit on here necessarily. But we can't preclude somebody from doing it if they have a 7,000-square-foot lot and they have the parking and, and the other open space requirements. So, the granny units could happen on top of whatever else we do for affordables. So, I don't think one precludes the other. We could end up with both, or if we don't want affordables, we could end up with neither.
Mr. Pike, anything else? Ms. Plowman?
Just one thing I want to point out is, I know we're, there's a little bit of conflicting information, but that's okay, that happens in this process. Granny units, if, if we're really concerned about traffic and parking and issues in this neighborhood, eight granny units versus three attached affordable units generates more traffic. So, and, and actually, when, if you do a traffic analysis, if we did eight lots, that's eight peak-hour trips. But if you do these 10 lots, the, that's, that's 10 peak-hour trips. So, you're only getting two additional peak-hour trips out of this development, whereas if you did eight granny units, you'd be getting more than that. So, it's just something to factor into your thinking.
Anything else? Is there?
Only thank you very much for the input. Thanks for nothing, is what I'm saying.
Listen, we gave you the longest concept review in history. I mean, I-
I was going to ask you if you want us to continue. We could come back another time with some more concept discussion. But I think we have enough input now to make some decisions, and hopefully, in a couple, two or three months, we'll be back with a final project, and all of our exhibits will all be consistent with what we presented.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, that brings us to our administrative agenda. We'll first do committee and liaison reports. Anybody have any committee and liaison reports? Mr. Thompson?
Well, I did attend the Traffic and Circulation Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. Big discussion there about some of the traffic measures on the ballot and also the Measure G on the ballot, but nothing of interest, I think, to the land use, other than that we will have a joint meeting coming up next week.
Okay, thank you. I have been really remiss in getting to the downtown parking committee meetings. They've had several in the last, I, I think they've had three in the last month and a half. And they've been real concerned with the Plan Santa Barbara and their input to Plan Santa Barbara. There's a couple of those meetings that I wasn't aware of. They were special and I, I didn't get to them, and schedules have just not been able to allow me to get to the 7:30, 7:30 meeting this morning. But I just wanted to alert the commission that they are, will be submitting some thoughts on Plan Santa Barbara and their, their focus in, in the plan. And we'll look forward to those coming. And, and again, my apologies to the commission and the, the committee for not being able to represent the planning commission in their talks. Seeing no others, we'll move on to the staff hearing officer review.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the last staff hearing officer meeting, we have yet two more time extensions. I expect we'll be seeing more of those of two condo conversion projects on Felinda, two four-unit projects there. There was a one-story mod at 402 Orija del Mar that was approved, a, a required window expansion on, at 1823 Grand Avenue that needed a mod for, for fiery egress purposes. A front area, a front yard mod at 281 Schulte Lane caused by the property being adjacent to Royal Borough Creek, South Coast conduit, overhead power lines, all pushing the, the building envelope to be closer to the now-private street, which now requires a front yard setback rather than when this subdivision was created, an interior yard setback. So, it's kind of an interesting little planning wrinkle there. And then finally, a, a guardrail over a retaining wall on 1560 La Vista del Oceano that goes above the eight-foot-high retaining wall height was given a mod.
Thank you. Okay, we have review and consideration of some minutes, the draft minutes of September Any, any changes seen?
I will abstain from this item as I was absent.
Okay. I just saw some, some clerical errors at the bottom of page three. I don't know if they matter that much, some spacing errors. That's all I actually found. Anybody else? Nothing? Then, how about resolution? Bruce?
No, I listened.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Bartlet?
Okay. On page three of the minutes, our comment number, number one, the last two sentences don't make sense to me. It says, "In the absence of street parking, two commissioners felt the proposal was supportable and compatible with the neighborhood." So, the proposal is what the applicant did, and then, then the other, page three, and then it says, "Two commissioners were in support of the appeal." Well, the, the proposal is done by the appellant. His project was denied. So, aren't, then, don't we have four commissioners saying the same thing?
Maybe the, it should be project, "supportable," since the proposal is the appellant's.
So, if two supported the appeal, which is the project, and the other two were in support of the proj, is that four in support of the project? Or is it the same? It's very confusing the way it's worded here, so I just-
I don't know. Can we look at the, and look at the notes and, and video and try to figure out what two were saying what?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I mean, with, in the absence of street parking, I mean, whether, was it, the, the discussion there was about the parking permit, right? So, in the absence of the parking permit?
No, we're, no, it's, page three, we're talking about 1420 Alameda Pogusara. So, the, so the discussion was, there's no parking on APS.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And because there's no parking on APS, two of the commissioners thought that the proposal for the two, for the two parking spaces was okay. And then, I think the other two just supported it in general.
So, it's a total of four?
Yeah.
In support?
But for different-
Right. This makes it sound like they were opposite of each other, the way it's worded, but, okay.
We'll work on that.
The, the applicant is the appellant?
Correct, right.
Yeah, right. That's the confusing part.
Right, right.
Okay. And then on number two, I think the last part of the sentence, cars should exit, should just be head-first rather than with headlights first. That's it.
Moves us on to resolution number 034-08, 1420 Alameda Pogusara. Anything on that? Saw look for a motion to approve the minutes and resolution as amended.
Who moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries 6-0, and with Ms. Jacobs abstaining. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.